Can you introduce yourself and form your way up? I'm sorry, I should have.
Yes, I'm Kathy Aldison, Vice President of the Harrison County Humane Society. Our building was damaged Memorial Weekend due to some flooding that has started today with the jackhammering of the damaged concrete floor. And then the new floor will be poured and hopefully done by Wednesday, and we will be back up in operation by next week. We have moved the footings and the flooring for our new addition, so we're moving onward and upward. One of the other things I want to comment on is our feral cats spay and neuter clinics. We are having way more of those than I had ever anticipated, and that's due in part to the fact that the Dunlap Veterinary Clinic has agreed to do the spay and neutering of those feral cats for us. They have students from Iowa State come down that need experience, and that's a great way for them to get that experience. And Dr. Johanna Pottis, who is a fairly new vet there, has worked in that area before she came to Dunlap, and she's very supportive of our efforts. We have had four clinics in Logan, and I know that a lot of the residents have seen a great reduction in the feral cat population. One of my concerns is that we did a clinic in one of our neighborhoods in the spring, really nice, healthy, big cats that were keeping the mice and rodent population down. We are now not finding those cats any longer. We recently found a pile of cats in a shed that were dead. We had an autopsy done on one of the cats. Unfortunately, there was not enough food matter in the stomach to determine whether they had been poisoned. I just kind of want to use this forum just to let citizens know that poisoning of the feral cats will not take care of the situation. Feral cats, once they are fixed, will keep other ferals out of their territory. If you poison the cats and kill them, it just opens up the territory for more feral cats to come in. I know people think that that's a great way to reduce the population, but we are really getting a handle on it. We're continuing to get grant funding, and we're making great strides. It's something that we're going to continue to do, we're always going to do, and poisoning just is not the answer. Many communities that have been in this program for many, many years have seen tremendous reduction in their feral cats, but yet they're able to keep the rodent population down. So I just kind of wanted to use this forum as just kind of an educational, informational thing that, please don't poison them. We will get them taken care of, and they do serve a great purpose in this community. One of the things that I really wanted to come to here tonight was about animal neglect. It just kind of seems to be a vicious circle as far as what we can do about it. The ordinance in Logan is pretty small, and it's not very informative. It doesn't really define what adequate food, shelter, or water is. Basically, what it is, whoever gets called to respond to these neglect situations, it's their opinion as to what adequate is. The state ordinances and codes actually spells that out, and that's something that I would like to adopt in the cities that we have a 2080 agreement with. There's also, in the state, a definition of a animal warden. Now, this is not animal control, but it is an animal warden that, from what I can come to, is we actually fall under that animal warden definition since we are contracted with the city of Logan under the 2080 agreement. It just says that "an animal warden means any person employed, contracted, or appointed by the state, municipal corporation, or any political subdivision of the state for the purpose of aiding in the enforcement of the provisions of this chapter, or any other law or ordinance relating to the licensing of animals, control of animals, or seizure and empowerment of animals, and includes any peace officer, animal control officer, or other employee whose duties in whole or in part include assignments which involve the seizure or taking into custody of any animal." Police officers do not have time to take care of these situations. If we can adopt into Logan City Code that definition of animal warden, Harrison County Humane Society volunteers can go to the site where the neglect is. We can make the assessment. We can do an administrative process, which includes contacting the residents, which is going to be our first way of taking care of this. We're not going to go in with guns blazing. We want to let the people know that we are there to help if they need help in a neglect situation, and sometimes that is the case. We have at our disposal food and people that will come in and help them take care of their neglected animals. If that isn't the case, if it's just that they're neglected, we can still go through our administrative process, and if we have to, we can ask for assistance from our city law enforcement, which I've talked with a couple of them in length, and they're both very willing to help us with any situation that we have. If we come across a hostile person, they have been more than willing to say, yes, we will go on the property with you and help you assess the situation. That's one of the things that I would like to do, is write up the definition of what adequate shelter, water, and food are, and make that a little more lengthy and have a little more clarity to it. I think if we can do that, we will have a little bit more ground to stand on as far as being able to get these neglect situations under control. And that's all I have. If that's something that the council, you know, thinks is doable for the code, I'll be more than willing to write it up, and I will get it to the attorney and to this council at the next meeting if so, so need be. So, thank you very much.
Any questions?
If you want to add to Mike, I'd just kind of go ahead and share it. So do you have that, and you don't think you need to wait if you've got some of that? If you've got some of that written up?
I do not have it written up. I was going to wait to see if you guys, if that was something that you would be willing for me to do. I wasn't going to get it all written up, and I literally don't want to go that far.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see what it contains and what it contains. You've read some of it, so I'm going to have to go.
This basically is from state code, and states actually has in their code definitions that says adequate, what adequate food is and adequate water. They don't actually spell out what adequate shelter is, but that is something that I would like to incorporate and send to the attorneys so that they can look at it and make sure my verbiage is correct.
I'd be willing to look at it.
Yeah, I think we're, it looks like we're all in favor and it's a good idea, so we'd entertain that.
Okay, very good. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would that be ready for our next city council meeting on the 19th, or is that a little early?
No, I can have it ready by then.
All right, that'd be great. Good, thanks. We'll go back to Agenda Item Number 19, and I believe we all have a copy of the community's general rental rates. So I guess as I look at this, wouldn't it work whether you're individual, or you're a group, or whatever? The meeting room, meetings are $10 per hour, conference room, $10 per hour, meeting activities in the main hall, $20 per hour. Does that work?
Pretty much lays it all out.
Yeah, I mean, they could pretty much lays out everything.
The individuals were concerned about paying that amount. They wanted a waiver for specific individual benefits.
I don't think we need to do that. Vicky, I think if it's for individuals, they should be charged the same as anybody else.
So are we going to stay with our rental rates that we have here, and the individuals would pay just like everybody else would?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay, let's stay here, hold the course then. 21, discuss and consider ordinance for chickens. Nick, can you put this on?
At the last meeting when this was on the agenda, I kind of put it out there for anybody to contact me, maybe give me their input on what they were thinking. I was only contacted by a couple individuals, so I guess I came up with what I, or I put something together. I didn't go for the whole ordinance. I didn't, I just thought an amendment may be better than redoing the whole ordinance. But this is what I am proposing, to allow poultry within the city limits. No roosters, nuisance laws would apply. The number of chickens would be commensurate with the size and location of the property, not constituting a criminal nuisance. So I know there's probably more work to be done, I guess. I was just, I guess I was, I feel that this is a pretty controversial issue apparently, and there's a lot of people out there with opinions. I was a little disappointed that I received no contact other than a couple people. So that's what I'm proposing.
You know, this community needs to get this issue behind us and move on, and both parties need to come to the table willing, I think, to talk, compromise, and resolve. And whatever we need to do to sit down collectively and bring this situation to a resolution that both parties can agree on, we can't do that soon enough. It is, it is a big situation for our community and one that really, we just need to put behind us, and it's gone on way too long, and I would agree with that. And I think that, you know, I for one, Nick, I would sit down with you, and I would draft the finer points as well. I mean, you know, the one area that, the one article that we referenced back in June, June 24th, I believe, was an article out of Citiescape, and it really got into, I think, a lot of good things that we kind of talked about in that meeting, and I think you touched on some of those. But, you know, I don't know why we just can't sit down and, you know, write out what this looks like and present it to the council ahead of time, so the council has time to look at it and review it, and then, you know, come to some decisions or some conclusions on this. And I would be, you know, offering as well to sit down with the Johnsons and get their views, and the Heebs, and whomever else as well. Nick, you and I could, again, I'm offering to sit down with you and go into more detail on this. I wonder if anybody else has any comments or...
I guess, what are you looking for? I mean, what are we looking for here? I brought this up two or three times, and it's went absolutely nowhere. It seems like we're just trying to put it off and put it off. Let's come together and get something worked out. I mean, like I said, if you don't want chickens in town, I don't understand why anybody didn't call me and tell me, no. I mean, do I want to spend hours and hours putting together an ordinance if it's not going to go anywhere? Not, I mean, I don't really want to do that. If it's not going to, if we can't pass it. So I guess at the last meeting when I said, you can contact me, let me know what you're thinking, and I didn't hear anything, and I took it as you don't care or you don't want to talk about it. So if you feel different, I mean, do we have to have a number? Is there, you know, what restrictions are we having? That's what I can't get past.
So first off, you know, I think we have to look at something on the agenda that gives us something to approve. You know, consider and discuss ordinance for chickens. I know that you've verbalized it there a bit, it'd be nice to have something kind of in writing to review a little bit ahead of time. And secondly, you know, when we discuss a written consent, you know, we have to have a written consent for something. I mean, just to say chickens, we could have 100 chickens, 1,000, five, four, whatever. I'm looking at, I guess me personally, and again, I can't speak for the whole council, so I'm not trying to here. You know, we itemized out kind of this article that got into kind of the chickens, the type of chickens, number of chickens, kind of some requirements for the pins and those sorts of things, all of that, and then how do you deal with the neighbors? And then if there is a conflict, how do you resolve the conflict? How do you enforce the ordinance? Those sorts of things. And I think, you know, if we just kind of followed kind of the Citiescape article, I think we could just go down item by item and probably put some things down for everybody to react to. Could I be willing to do that to get it on the agenda for the next meeting? But I can't speak for Dennis or Dee here.
I think it'd be a good idea if the two of them got together, but, you know, because we need to solve some of the issues, you know, how many chickens can we have? Who's going to take care of the waste? What are you going to do with the waste? You know, that sort of thing. You know, who's going to be able to go on the property and check and make sure that, you know, they're supposed to have five chickens and they don't have 150 chickens, you know? That sort of thing.
Dennis, how do people with more than one pet of any kind take care of the waste?
My wife picks it up in a garbage bag.
Exactly.
Some people don't, so. There's a lot of them in town that, you know, walk their dogs, they don't, so.
So if we, are we setting a precedence with every other animal that we have in town? I mean, are we going to say you can only have two hamsters in your house? Are we going to say you can only have two dogs? Cats?
Could you forward, Nick, your notes to all of us in terms of where you're at with that? Isn't that a great starting point to add on to that?
Yeah.
Has the city attorney had the chance to review the notes as well, or your thoughts as far as changing the ordinance?
No. I didn't really want to spend money on it if it wasn't going to go anywhere.
Any other comments or questions on that? Agenda Item 22, net measures.
This is the other topic that's been discussed over and over again. Everybody says they want to do something about it. So tonight, I have written something up. I am willing to do something about it. I have here a statement that I wrote. Logan City Council grants Savannah Johnson permission for poultry within the city limits per Logan City Code 55.05 in accommodation and consideration of her request and the recommendation of her physician. I'm going, I make a motion that we pass this. I'm going to sign it and date it, giving her permission, if it passes. So I'm going to sign it right now and pass it down the line. Nope.
Did you have any thoughts in terms of amount, numbers, types, all of that we talked about?
Once again, I don't see that, I don't see that there's a, there needs to be a restriction on the number. If they, if there's a high enough number, it's going to be a nuisance. If it's a nuisance, you write an abatement, and they can, we can abate them. I mean...
What's the definition of a nuisance? Because we're going to be in conflict here as far as, in the eyes to be older? One person thinks it's 10, another person thinks it's five, or 12, or 15?
If you go online to the chicken ordinance website, a lot of towns will let you have chickens, but they'll only allow you to have two, four, six, up to 20 or 30. But there's a lot of requirements involved in that. And I think we need some more guidance as far as, you know, the rules. I'm willing to let her have the chickens, but, you know, let's have some rules, and let's have somebody that's allowed to go on the property to take care of them.
Bring some rules.
Write up some rules. Write up the rules.
Nick, once you and I sit down, do we now, like, excuse me, to write up some rules?
I made a motion to give Savannah her chickens back. Do I have a second? Yeah, I did before I signed the paper, I said I made a motion.
We do have a motion.
Give Savannah her chickens back.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments or questions?
I think if she could have six chickens to start out with, I think that would be fine. That'd give her some comfort.
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Stand.
Crum?
Nay.
And I vote nay as well. I want to get this behind us, and just before we leave tonight, get a time where you and I can sit down. Agenda Item Number 24, report from Public Works Director.
This went well, like 30 feet deep. We had one leak in air, which created an airlock to pump, pump and rumble, and pump anything. We got an electric pump up here, got it going, but we realized we had more problems, so they came, this was a Friday night, we worked till 11 o'clock getting that up and going. It came back Monday, and we pumped it down, and they went down in there, and all of our couplings from when that was rehab back in 2001, they've all worked themselves loose from all the vibration and the check valves hammering, and they're all worn and will not seal up. And they are telling me that they were not the right couplings from the start. So it doesn't make any sense to replace those couplings with the same thing we have. We have one pipe that does have a hole worn in it at the bottom from, it's been leaking long enough, so it would have to be replaced anyway. So the recommendation is that we re-pipe the entire lift station. And so I finally received a price from them at 4:30 this afternoon, and that price is $12,244.
From where to where?
It's just in the lift station. A lift station is the big concrete pit, the pumps are at the bottom. It pumps it up about 20 feet and then out through the check valve. So just inside the pit is the only place we need to re-pipe. The check valve pit has the same couplings and everything, but we don't have the vibration there and everything, and they're all okay, so we're going to stay with that. This is something that we did plan on, but I think there's no reason to go down in there and replace those same couplings with the same thing, because 18 years from now, we're going to have the same problems, so. And this, these have probably been leaking longer than, longer than we thought, we just didn't know that, you know, until we started having problems. So I just wanted to let you know that we're going to, as I always say, it's my job to spend the money, you guys' job to figure out how to pay for it. This is not good, so that's another $12,000 on top of the $14,000 pump, so. But hopefully, when we get this all rehabbed, why, we will be in good shape for several years, so. I just wanted to let you know that. The back page, and this kind of scared me, I didn't realize that they would be this high. We talked about, they talked to me about putting what they call slow starts or slow stops on those pumps, their electrical thing. These are 50 horsepower motors that pump 750 gallons a minute, so when they kick on and kick off, there's quite a bit of hammer there, and we're pushing wastewater under the river and to the east up over that hill, so we have a lot of head pressure. So they talked about putting those on there, which will, actually, when the pump kicks on, the motor will just start ramping up real slow, up to its full RPMs, and then when it shuts down, it'll slow down gradually. Your check valves won't slam shut or anything like that, would eliminate all that vibration. But I didn't think they would be $16,000, so. I was thinking more in the $4,000, $5,000 range. I had no idea, but that's what I had in my head. So I guess my recommendation there is that we not do that part for now, see how we get along possibly, maybe we can work that into the budget in the next couple of years, because they, those don't have to be in the wet well, those are installed in the electrical panel, so that's something they could do anytime. I think once we get the new pipe, we can do couplings, we'll be okay without those, and then we can maybe work that in later, because that's, gets it up to another $28,000 on top of the $14,000 pump, and we didn't have any of this budgeted, so.
So did those slow start stop features, would that have prevented some of the stuff that's gone wrong?
Yeah, probably would have, if they didn't have that feature when, when that was all done 11, 12 years ago, as far as I know, they didn't know this.
But your point is if we replace all this, it might be good to prevent it?
Yeah, it may be good to do that. I'm just, I think I'm recommending that we don't try to do it now with that kind of money. If it's $4,000, I say we need to do that. But I think that's something we could maybe work... But I think that's something we could maybe work into the budget here in the next couple of years, and they may go up some. But, I mean, that's up to you guys. If you want to spend $16,000 to do it, I'm all for that, but, but, I mean, we're talking, you know, 14 and 28 is, you know, quite, almost $50,000 here.
How many pumps would that apply to?
There's two pumps, and they alternate.
Any benefit to do one?
Well, one pump, if it goes bad, something happens and I can't pump wastewater, that's not good. So, that's why we have two. Right now, we're down one pump. It's a good thing we have two, because we have one running, so.
But the slow stop, slow start, slow stop feature, would, would it make sense to even do one and the second one later?
No, because the pumps alternate, I mean, so, both pumps run during the day at some time, so.
They're alternating.
So that's the bad news, but I think we'll go ahead and, you know, we have to go ahead and do the repiping, but then I will discuss that with Jim some more on those. I didn't realize they were that high. I don't know if they have something cheaper than that. I will discuss that with him when they get here to do it. So that's the bad news. The good news, I think, Vicki gave you a copy of the DOT ramp construction. That was something that was talked about earlier this spring, that they were going to come in, we didn't really know what was going on with it. I did get some information from them a couple of weeks ago, and they have a start date of August 26th, and I think there's pictures of these. I don't know if you can figure out where they're all at, but they're going to do three corners at Maple and Seventh, which would be Roger Sealy Station and Linda Lager's corner and the other corner there by Fred Swangers.
Do you have a cost of setting on this?
Uh, not that I know of, no.
Go ahead.
I've never seen it, but I think that was originally when Randy checked into that, that this is some kind of a grant that they're doing or something, or, I think Skip checked into it or something, yeah.
It's only if we had some lines pull up or something move or something, and they didn't foresee any, or didn't think there was any.
The only thing, if you can look at them, you can figure out where all those are, and this is, this is really going to be nice when they get it done. It looks like it's going to be pretty good. The only one that I did call back and they're going to look at, if you go to ramp 29, and that is the intersection there at where Mini Mart, so it'd be First Avenue and Seventh Street. Right now, that is all flat, and we push, I push a lot of snow across that up to Pyle, like, from along the jail, Highway 30, and they're proposing putting a 24-inch curb right there, just a little short stub.
That diameter there?
And I talked to that guy, and I said, "That won't last two years. I'll have that thing knocked out of there." So he is checking to see if they can eliminate that little curb, and I haven't heard back from him yet, but that was the only question I had, unless you guys had any questions on any of those intersections. We have two. Then they're doing that whole intersection, all four corners there, at First Avenue, that'd be Mini Mart, Law Enforcement, Courthouse, Jeff Meyer's Apartments. And then the two good ones are down at, well, it's Mount Timer's Pub, there, the old corner tavern, and that corner is bad, it needs to be something done. They're going to do that one, which will be nice. And across the street, that fuel and shine, that one's also, all that curb is gone, and that one's going to be done, so that'll really help. And then the one by the park there, by the flagpole, so. So I think when they get all those done, that's going to be really nice, but they're going to check and see about changing the one, unless you guys see anything else that you would think needs to be changed on that line. If there is, I will call him, but I thought it all looked pretty good except for the Mini Mart one, so.
As long as you're happy.
Yeah, if there's even a way to, instead of a hard curb there, to keep that diamond still, because I can see their idea, they want direct traffic or pedestrian traffic to those two edges, even if you could get us land.
Right, that's what he was going to check to, and that's what we were talking about. I suppose they need to have that raised area, so it designates where the walk area is for handicapped, blind, whatever, you know, I don't know. But he understands what I'm talking about, so he was going to check and see if they could change that, and I kind of told him that if he could, and I probably would before a couple winters were over, but, so, we'll just wait to hear on that. I'm sure they'll work out something, so. I guess that's all I got, unless you have any questions about anything else that's going on.
Any questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Pretty much, we went through everything. I was going to update about the maintenance assistant position of where it was being run. The church services there through long lines, we did a follow-up letter to all the area churches, encouraging them to purchase maintenance service. I've had, I'm working with some tree removal, recommendation by Warner Insurance, getting some bids on them. We also had a request made by a person to check into getting a larger plaque for the senior center to put by their door, and a plaque for the honor board for Miles Barnhart. The date has been changed for the renewal with the United Healthcare, and our outstanding obligation report is due on August 15. We got notification that it's currently under my, are under construction and offline, and we will be notified when we can submit with instructions for the new system.
Was the tree removal piece, was that, per that study that we had? If anyone remembers that, they identified a bunch of trees, is that what you're using to identify these trees, or what's the basis for the tree removal?
I've had a request.
Any other comments or questions for Vicki? Agenda item 26, Mayor Pro Tim comments, and I just have one, and that's, the special election for mayor is a week from tomorrow, I believe that would be the 13th of August. And that's all that I have. Does somebody have something else? If not, agenda item number 27, is citizens' questions and comments? I wanted to read to you the Iowa State Code for nuisances. Hold on a second, I had it. Okay, 650, 657.1 Iowa Code, nuisances. Whatever is injurious to health, indecent, or unreasonably offensive to the senses, or an obstruction... Yeah, I just lost it again. Whatever is injurious to health, indecent, or unreasonably offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property, as to essentially to interfere unreasonable with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. And I just want to point out, you know, nobody can say that any of this has been fit any of that definition for either of us. The only thing that's obstruction to my free and use of my property is you guys. And I have to just say, I think you need to have, you need to at least consider making a motion. I mean, we're going to go to court this week. Now, really, is this really making a lot of sense to take us to court over something that you guys are considering changing? Why don't you at least make a motion to hold in abance this stuff, so we don't have to go through this and cost you money, cost us money? I just think this is kind of nonsense. And, you know, I think it's also interesting, my son's girlfriend is from Beijing, China, and I asked her tonight, I said, "Are chickens legal in Beijing, China?" And she thought for a minute, and she said, "I don't think anyone cares." You're right, because they're eating us economically for lunch, they're thinking about business, they're not thinking about what people do in the private, quiet enjoyment of their backyard. And I just think maybe we in Logan ought to consider that as an economic point, that we ought to get on with the business, fill in our stores, be in productive, let productive people be productive, and, and not, not, you know, not care about stuff that really is not hurting anybody. If anybody can tell me that there's been one bit of fiscal or emotional or some damage, you know, I'll be glad to listen to it, but it's hard to prove, because this doesn't happen. So, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Nick, because I do believe your heart's in the right place, and you're trying to bring us to a resolution and trying to do the right thing, and I thank you for at least making that effort. I also want to thank Mike and Danny for understanding that whatever we do is going to have a larger effect and has to be done properly, or we're going to have a mess. You know, and I, but I do want to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have a limit of three dogs. I think we have a limit of three cats. We have a dog ordinance that actually keeps you from owning certain breeds within town, Rottweilers, Spitfires, anything considered a dangerous breed. So there, there are other restrictions, and, and where does this stop? I mean, if someone decides that they use venomous snakes as part of their religious worship, do we, do we now give written permission for that? And, and I'm not sure we can give written permission, because our zoning ordinance is actually stricter than that part of our law that allows for the written permission and would supersede that. So, we've got to figure out a way to do this right. And, and I think, I think everybody in this room really does not have a problem with Savannah having her chickens. But we also got to consider, there are a lot of people in mosaic homes that would find comfort with different animals. There, I mean, we have other people in this community that would meet those needs, and we just have to find a way to do this right, and we, we need to get through this somehow and get it.
Samantha Johnson from Logan, Iowa. I think everybody probably knows who I am. I would like to thank everyone, the people that are here, but a lot of people that are not here tonight, that are really trying to help my daughter and that are very concerned about her. To the people who ask questions, that don't understand the situation, I apologize, I, we don't have to explain the details of the situation to you. No one in this room moves to this town and turns over their medical records to the public. I'm happy to have coop inspections, if that would make you happy. Danny, as a matter of fact, you're welcome to come. You can come once a week, and while you're there, you can check the kids' bedrooms and make sure they're clean too. And, like I said, I appreciate all the work that people are doing to get my, my daughter's life back to normal, and to the people that don't understand, I apologize, but, you know, it's, you may never, you may never understand autism.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Or councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.